Good evening. I'd like to call the Winton Woods Board of Education regular meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, January 26, 2015. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Burns, Mr. Cleary.
Here.
Dr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Penneka.
Here.
This is Miranda. Present. Our first item on the agenda this evening is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, President Miranda. My first award is to Amaya Lovett. Is she here? Come on up. Right here. All right. This first award is for trustworthiness, and this is a award that's given from the Kiwanis Association, and her teacher, Ms. Giblin, writes about Amaya. "I've known Amaya Lovett since she was in grade seven, and I've enjoyed watching her grow and mature over this time. She is the perfect example of a Winton Woods warrior because she shows great character. She is helpful, trustworthy, honest, hardworking, and reliable. Not only does she help whenever it is needed, but she anticipates when you might need help and offers before you are even aware of it. She assumes responsibility without hesitation and always follows through. Not only is this the epitome of trustworthiness, but also integrity. She values her education and the opportunities it will afford her. She works hard to help others and is dedicated to building strong relationships with her peers and teachers. She's a great role model, and her true character is always shining through, and she's incredibly friendly." That is Amaya Lovett. (applause). Want to say something? Okay. She says she's shy, but all these things are true. All right.[159.56][159.56](laughter). Turn around for a picture.
Okay. Two, three. And Miranda, you have a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card.
No!
I don't see them.
Congratulations. Let's give Amaya another hand. Thank you.
It's missing a signature.
I'll sign it. The next award is for the Student of the Month, and this award is reserved for Matthew McNeil. Is Matthew here? Fantastic. All right. It's about time we got some guys in here. With enthusiasm, I write this letter of recommendation for Matthew McNeil. Matthew is a genuine pleasure to be around. His dedication and kind personality contribute to his relationships with students and staff in our building. He possesses many qualities which will ensure his success in college, but the most notable ones are his exemplary character, his resourcefulness, and his uncompromising work ethic. Matthew is an excellent student and a fine young man. He has a 3.47 GPA and is ranked 24 out of 275 seniors in his senior class, which is in the top 10 percent of his class. He has completed a rigorous course load in Academic Academy of Global Studies at Winton Woods High School and is on track to receive a diploma with honors. He is responsible and knows how to work with others and definitely leads by example. He has won the highest respect from our teaching staff. His personality combined with his people skills and respect for others has produced a student who will have a positive impact in our world. I've been able to work with Matthew as his counselor for two years, his freshman year and currently his senior year. Although I've only known him for just two years, I've noticed his determination to succeed. He is at school every day and pushes himself to understand class material and produce a high quality of work. He is proactive in his schoolwork, and it shows because he holds an A average in most of his classes. Matt does not shy away from a challenge, but rather wants to challenge himself by taking rigorous courses this school year. This year, he is taking numerous advanced placement courses. Matthew has excellent leadership and interpersonal skills. He is reliable, organized, well-rounded, and has a positive attitude. Matthews is a student in the Academy of Global Studies, which is a program at Winton Woods High School, which focuses on critical thinking, communication skills, and has a global perspective. The program has highly rigorous schedules for students to complete, and Matt has been very successful in our program. Not only is he a leader in the classroom, Matt is involved with activities in and outside of school. He participates in our UN Model Team where he is the student to debate about world issues and other schools nationwide. Students compete in Model UN competitions throughout the country. Matt is the chairman of the team. He is also president of the Astronomy Club, is the manager of the cross-country team, and plays the viola in our orchestra. Matt is also involved in his community outside of school. He has volunteered numerous hours at the Forest Chapel Youth Basketball Camp, helps out in the IHN Homeless Housing Program, and has also been part of a painting crew for Crossroads Church. With his leadership and volunteer experience, it is evident that Matthew is able to maintain balance in his life. He strives to improve his community through his volunteer services, learn leadership abilities to take leadership roles at school, and continues to be at the top 10 percent of his class. I'm convinced that Matthew will continue the academic, personal, and professional success he has demonstrated as a high school student. He will be a valuable asset to any school profession and to our society. Mr. Matthew McNeil. (applause).
Matthew looks like he wants to say something.
Thanks.[404.12][404.12](laughter).
Matthew, what are you planning on doing next year?
Next year, I plan to go to college either at the Ohio State University or Otterbein. I was recently accepted into the Otterbein Honors Program, so I'm very happy about that.
Congratulations. Fantastic. Excellent. Matthew, I have one question. What do you do in your free time?
Well, I brought it this year, so I do a lot of homework.
All right. Very good. Way to go. Matthew, you have some guests with you. Could you introduce who they are?
Yeah. This is my mom and my dad in the front row.
Congratulations, Mom and Dad. And Amaya, before we let you sneak out of here, who do you have with you? All right, Mom. Thank you very much for sending a message. The next award is the Community Spirit Award, and this award is given to Mr. Sean Trinan. Mr. Trinan, it looks like you're going to want to have a speech after this, so I hope you got it ready. Okay. The Forest Park Kroger takes its educational partnership with Winton Woods City Schools very seriously. So seriously, in fact, that manager Sean Trinan allowed part of the store to be turned into a classroom for four weeks last summer for a special program called Kick the Summer Slide. How many of you are aware of that? Wow. We need to get our PR department out there. The program implemented by L. Louise Richardson, an academic advisor and educational assistant with the district, provided fun and educational activities and incentives to help encourage schoolchildren to stay academically focused during the summer. During that time, over 370 students were academically engaged in science, reading, and math activities. Additionally, Kroger's Community Rewards Program is an ongoing partnership with the district's PTA. This educational fundraising opportunity has raised thousands of dollars in scholarship money for Winton Woods seniors who are attending college. For many years, Kroger has also been generous with gift card donations that helped feed students participating in the high school's Spring Musical, provided incentives for parents' check progress book, and provided refreshments at events and open houses throughout the district that are too numerous to count. The store has participated in the high school's Student of the Job Fair, and the Kroger Company was a generous donor of varsity ensemble's 2008 trip to China. Just last year, the Forest Park Kroger set up a recycle can collection site for Winton Woods and intermediate schools, St. Jude fundraiser, and donated cans that helped deliver them to the recycling center. The partnership led to over $340 collected for St. Jude's Research Hospital. Thank you store manager, Mr. Triven, and all the employees of the Forest Park Kroger for your ongoing educational partnership with Winton Woods City Schools. Thank you very much. (applause).
I would just like to thank the community of Forest Park and the Winton Woods School District for your guys' continued support of our business. We do try to be an excellent partner in the business community, and the relationship we have with the Winton Woods School District, in a large part facilitated by Ms. Louise Richardson, has been critical to our success as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Jordan, you ready?
Tonight, we'd like to recognize some Chinese students who've come here for the remainder of the school year. This is Ms. Stella Soon, and she will be reading the names of the Chinese students who are here, and I'll be reading the host family. Thank you to all the host families who have been willing to give of their time and their space in their homes to help these students to have a wonderful educational experience here in the United States. So, Ms. Soon?
Yes.
And as your name is called, if you would please come forward, and you will be receiving a medal as a momento of your time here. So, come forward and begin at that end. There's a lot of you, so we're going to have to kind of stack in rows, but let's go ahead and proceed. Clarice Chen Shu Chai. Host family is the Jebramarium and Eden Daniel family. Penny Fan Shi Yi. The host family is Christina and Bill Thomas. Kimmy Gong Hong Da. Host family is Ying Wong. Nat Huang Guang Nan. Also with Hsin Ying Wong. Kevin Liu Yu Xuan. Host family is Kevin and Jessica Fujikawa. Molly Lu Zhao Yi. Family is Christina and Bill Thomas. Jimmy New Yue Feng. Family is Mary and Larry Bennett. Joyce Pan Yu Chong. Host family is Barb and Glenn Dries. David Pan Yu Yuan. The host family is Renetta Lucas. Nick Sun Yi Le. Host family is Mary and Larry Bennett. Rose Wang Zhen. Host family Cindy Marku. Wilson Wu Zi Ya. Host family is Renetta Lucas. Frank Xu Bo Ju. Host family is Eileen and Todd Manera. Jerry Yang Yong Jie. Host family, again, Eileen and Todd Manera. Jennifer Yu Yue. Host family Sandy Albers. Robin Zhang Shen. Host family David and Cassandra Fowler. Estaria Zhang Qing Yuan. Host family Sandy Albers. Estelle Zhang Ye Ye. Host family Sharon Thompson. Frank Zhao Yong Qian. Host family Marlene and Bill Spielman. Peter Zhao Zi Ying. Host family Marlene and Bill Spielman. And we also have a medal for our accompanying Chinese teacher, Ms. Hai Hong. Stella Soon. And we also would like to thank Dehan Education, who has been largely responsible for these Chinese students coming to the United States. The Dehan Education President is Michelle Hu, and her educational consultant for Winton Woods is Ms. Annie Zi.
Would you like to say a few words, Ms.? I would like to take this opportunity to extend my, our deep appreciation to all involved in this program, to our community, which is very welcoming to all of our students from overseas, and to the, you know, to the school district who spend a lot of time to build up a supportive environment, and to our host families who are warm and open up their hearts and homes for our students. So, we feel honored to be a facilitator in this process, to bring, to deepen the cultural understanding between the two, you know, two parties, the schools, the school districts here, community here, and also the school in China. So, thank you, everybody.
And students, if you would please stay right where you are, let me take a quick, two pictures, please. And we need to make sure everyone can be seen, so.
Yeah. I was just going to say, maybe the shorter ones could stand up there. But. They're all tall. Maybe he's the only one that stood up there, so I don't know that that's kind of... I don't know. Make sure he's up there.
On the count of three. One, two, three. One more, please. If you would please get a little closer. Okay. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
I know some of you are wondering why didn't the superintendent announce those names? Well, I want to show my hospitality to my Chinese guests. All right. Our next award, not sure if you were aware, but this month is School Board Recognition Month. So, we get a chance to recognize my colleagues on the board, and the student, staff, and communities of Winton Woods City Schools join the Ohio School Board Association to honor the exemplary leadership service and endless hours of dedication given to our elected board members on behalf of our school district and its communities. And so, we have a nice young lady who's going to come up and give them their awards. Tell us who you are.
Hello, I am Jada Wakefield, a senior at Winton Woods High School, part of the Academy of Global Studies.
And why were you selected, Jada?
Because I am the executive president of Student Council at our school.
And how many universities are you accepted to?
Right now, it's six universities I've been accepted to, and I'm waiting on a few more.
And you're going to take the ACT one more time, right?
Yes.
All right. I tell you, none of that was rehearsed. All right. So, the first board member that we'd like to recognize is our president, Ms. Jessica Miranda.
I thought I got a break to sit down for a little bit.
And just to make it right, why don't you just run up right here? All right. This is the only time I get to tell them what to do. Vice President, who is not with us tonight, but we still want to recognize her, that would be our vice president, Ms. Kim Burns. Board member, Mr. Tim Cleary. Our very own Dr. Violet Johnson, who's kind of teary-eyed. Come on up, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. On three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
President Miranda, have you decided which board member will say a few words?
Sounds good.
All right, Dr. Johnson.
Oh, I love to talk so much. It doesn't really matter. Well, yes, John is pointing at his watch. We just really have come together to become a cohesive team. Not that we agree on everything, but we have come together to become a cohesive team to service the three communities, Forest Park, Springfield Township, and Green Hills. And all of us are very passionate about the work, and we appreciate that you appreciate us, that this is, this is always, it's an honor to serve your community, but to serve in a capacity of young minds and have the responsibility and accountability to make sure that education and academic excellence is going forth. We just appreciate that opportunity. So, thank you very much for giving us this honor and award.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Just saying, okay. He's punching me in the back. (laughter).
Ms. Miranda, may I take a picture before?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
Let's take a picture. Okay. On three. One, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay. There are two more awards, and this is a special presentation by Mr. Carlos De Jesus of the Episcopal Latino Ministries of Southwest Ohio. Mr. De Jesus runs a homework club for the district's Hispanic and African students whose native language is not English. He has many volunteers who tutor and assist our students with homework at his church. Mr. De Jesus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carlos De Jesus, and as Mrs. Smith indicated, I am with the Latino Ministry Commission of the Episcopal Church here in Southern Ohio. And on behalf of the Latino Ministry Commission, I wanted to say thank you to the school board, to Forest Park itself for all the great help that we have received, all the assistance that we have received over the years in helping the students who come to our homework club for, for help with their homework. These are mainly Latino students, but not always and not all, and these are kids who don't normally have help at home, so they come to us. This past November and December, a group made up of people from Forest Park, from various businesses, got together, and we had a toy drive. This was to provide toys and clothing to those kids, those families who come to our homework club, for whom maybe it would have been a rougher Christmas without some assistance. And it was a very, very successful toy drive and clothing drive. We were able to accommodate every child, and we brought toys and clothing, and as you see, the weather, we've had the last couple of months, it has come in quite handy. So, I wanted to read to you a letter that I have sent out to every company that participated in this toy drive, and that's about the purpose of this, of my being here tonight. "On behalf of the Latino Ministry Commission of the Episcopal Church, that is, Southern Ohio, the Latino Ministry Center of Forest Park, its volunteers, the children of the homework club and their parents, and the ESL teachers of Winton Woods School District, I want to thank each and every one of you for all of the wonderful toys and clothing that you provided for the December Fiesta Toy and Clothing Drive. As you know from being there, the toys were distributed to many children from throughout the Winton Woods School District at the Posada on December 20th. In just this week, which was a few weeks ago, the Winton Woods School District, the clothing was distributed at the Dia de las tres Reyes, the celebration of January 6th. The fire truck courtesy of the Forest Park Fire Department and the Santa courtesy of Home Depot, who arrived in the fire truck, were such a great, a treat for the children. The clothing could not have come at a better time considering the weather conditions so far this winter. You should all be proud of the happiness and joy that you have shared with the Latino population of Forest Park. To the wonderful folks from Fiesta Insurance, the city of Forest Park, the Forest Park Fire Department, Home Depot, and Serve Pro of Northwest Cincinnati, who supported you in this ministry, my hope is that everyone had a wonderful Christmas celebration and that the new year brings you much success, happiness, and prosperity. So, thank you very much for all your wonderful help."
And our final presentation for gifts, I'm not sure if anybody from Emeritas is here tonight, but we would like to extend our appreciation to the Emeritas family. Each year, they are the ones who frame the student artwork, and so they've continued on with that tradition by giving us a generous donation of 2,500 for student artwork framing. So, thank you, Emeritas. (applause). Madam President, that is all for gifts and awards and appreciation.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and congratulations again to all of our students. We will now take a five-minute recess. Okay, folks, we will now resume our regular meeting, and we will now hear comments from the public. The first public comment we have will be from Anees Whitaker. Did I say that right?
No.
Please correct me. What's your first name?
Arius.
Arius Whitaker. Please come on up.
Madam President, I'd be happy to, and as well as Mrs. Johnson, to serve as timekeepers this evening because we have so many of those.
Thank you both.
So, we'll give you a notice when your three minutes is almost up.
Yes, sir. I've known Ms. Candy since 2000, well, Ms. Donna, well, I've known her since 2004, 2005. She was my bus driver, and along with being a bus driver, she was not just a bus driver. She was more like someone I could go to and talk to. She stopped bullying, like, you seen these thick glasses? Like, she did bullying on the bus, and she was really nice, and she, she's there, like, for you. Like, she doesn't have favoritisms or sides or anything like that, and she, she really instilled a lot of character that I built and I have today from being on her bus. And now I have a six-year-old that rides the bus, and along with Ms. Pat and Ms. Candy, I wouldn't want them on anyone else's bus because I know they're going to get from A to B safely. Like, I know if a parent wasn't outside or it looked unsafe, she wouldn't let you off. And she just, she did her job, but she went above and beyond her job to take care of me. As you know, from being there, the toys were distributed to many children from throughout the Witten Woods School District at the Posada on December 20th. And just this week, which was a few weeks ago, the Witten Woods School District, the clothing was distributed at the Dia de las tres Reyes, Celebration of January 6th. The fire truck courtesy of the Forest Park Fire Department and the Santa courtesy of Home Depot, who arrived in the fire truck, were such a great, a treat for the children. The clothing could not have come at a better time considering the weather conditions so far this winter. You should all be proud of the happiness and joy that you have shared with the Latino population of Forest Park. To the wonderful folks from Fiesta Insurance, the city of Forest Park, the Forest Park Fire Department, Home Depot, and Servpro of Northwest Cincinnati, who supported you in this ministry, my hope is that everyone had a wonderful Christmas celebration, and that the new year brings you much success, happiness, and prosperity. So, thank you very much for all your wonderful help.
And our final presentation for gifts, I'm not sure if anybody from Emeritus is here tonight, but we would like to extend our appreciation to the Emeritus family. Each year, they are the ones who frame the student artwork, and so they've continued on with that tradition by giving us a generous donation of $2,500 for student artwork framing. So, thank you, Emeritus. Madam President, that is all for gifts and awards and appreciation.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and congratulations again to all of our students. We will now take a five-minute recess. Okay, folks, we will now resume our regular meeting. And we will now hear comments from the public. The first public comment we have will be from Aneesh Whitaker. Did I say that right?
No.
Please correct me. What's your first name?
Arius.
Arius Whitaker. Please come on up.
Madam President, I'd be happy to, and as well as Mrs. Johnson, to serve as timekeepers this evening, because we have so many of those.
Thank you both.
So, we'll give you a notice when your three minutes is almost up.
Yes, sir. I've known Ms. Candy since 2000, well, Ms. Donna, well, I've known her since 2004, 2005. She was my bus driver. And along with being a bus driver, she was not just a bus driver. She was more like someone I could go to and talk to. She stopped bullying, like, you see these thick glasses? Like, she did bullying on the bus, and she was really nice, and she, she's there, like, for you, like, she doesn't have favoritisms or sides or anything like that, and she, she really instilled a lot of character that I built and I have today from being on her bus. And now I have a six-year-old that rides the bus, and along with Ms. Pat and Ms. Candy, I wouldn't want them on anyone else's bus, because I know they're going to get from A to B safely. Like, I know if a parent wasn't outside, or it looked unsafe, she wouldn't let you off. And she just, she did her job, but she went above and beyond her job to take care of me and the kids that were on the bus, and she just is an all-around great person versus, you know, some that just do their job. She dealt with a lot of disrespect on our buses, from when I was in, on her bus, to today. So, I mean, I love Ms. Candy. I came from two jobs today, just to speak for her, because she's more than just a bus driver. She, she really affects a lot of people, so I love her lots.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nadina Imamovic. Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly. I apologize if not.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Nadina Imamovic, and I'm an exchange student from Bosnian Herzegovina, and I came here last August. I would love to share my experience with you since August till now. First of all, I would like to tell thank you to school board for letting me to be a student in this wonderful school, school. Thank you for allowing me to have my guide dog at the school for my TVI, which helps me a lot. I would also like to say thank you to Mrs. Henne and to everybody else for letting me perform my song in December in the Christmas concert. The song which I performed was named "Cold Christmas." I am very happy that everybody here understood the message of song. The people in my country would say, "You are a Muslim child, and you can't sing about Christmas." The Christians would say the same thing, but opposite. Thank you for understanding, understanding it. In December, I got an award from the State Department for the Student of the Month of all exchange students in the United States. A lot of them took credit for that, but I think that half of this credit is yours. Without you, I wouldn't get it. Two of the most important things I would like to say, that I am going to perform traditional Bosnian song on Thursday in the library. We are going to be 20 principals who are going to visit our high school, and also I'm going to give a speech in Michigan this coming March for the exchange program. So, I am also going to say thank you to my teachers, who understand that, first of all, English is not my first language, it is actually my third. And I also would like to say thank you for my coach, Mr. Boyd, for letting me to join track team despite I have visual impairment. I hope that after this year, you are always going to have a place for other disabled exchange students and make their experiences very good. Thank you for letting me, again, to be your student. Thank you for letting me to be equal with other people, to see what it means to be in public school and be with other people, to don't be separated. Thank you again.
Nadina, this is John Pinnikoff, and I just wanted you to know, I was there at the concert in December when you sang to the audience, and you really moved the audience. Thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Diana Gamble.
Good evening, everyone in the board. I was a bus driver at Witten Woods for, what, 13 years? I was also a coworker of Candy's. I love my job. The parents loved me. They used to bring me presents. I'd go back to the bus three and four times, getting stuff off my bus because of what the parents did. When I traded in my route, Bus 5, I'd been on that route for five years, because I was the last one getting off that bus, and it's dark outside. So, I traded my bus route in for another route. The parents cried, because I took my job serious. Those kids were my kids. Wasn't nobody going to threaten my kids, wasn't nobody going to hurt my kids, and the parents knew it. When I gave up Bus 5, I went to another bus, because another driver had left. That was Bus 3. Bus 3 was getting in early, at 3:15. When I got that route the following year, two days later, Bus 5 was getting in before Bus 3 was. The reason why I gave it up, because I kept being the last one on that lot, and it'd be dark. So, all the while I stayed at Witten Woods, I left at 2006. Bus 3 was getting in much later than Bus 5. Now, from the time '06, that bus was getting in way after dark from Bus 5. Bus 5 done been parked, and it's cold. Okay, I stuck it out. Now, I get called in the office by Christie, telling me that three parents are calling her, saying that I'm on my phone. And I told her, after she said she was going to bring me up to the board and all that, I ain't had a phone in three years. What I'm trying to sit down is like this, this is Bluetooth, my, just because it's on my head, don't mean that I'm on it. And sometime you can have it on your head, you don't even know it's there, just like my earrings. Candy is an honest bus driver. She's not going to jeopardize her life and those kids' life, just like me. Now, I'm a truck driver, and I, if I can come back, yeah, I put in another application too, so I can come back, because my granddaughter is there. And if Candy there, yeah, I want Candy to drive my granddaughter. So, I'm going to see how long, and if they call me, yeah, I'll come back, but that's up to them. And we take our job serious, because we have to take tests. And we out there with other people who driving naked is around in their cars. And I thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Batiste?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Donna Curry is one of my very best friends, and I met her at Word of Deliverance. And we've been friends for, I guess, five years now. And I just couldn't, I just never believed that she could be involved in anything, but we're all human beings, and things happen. That girl is dedicated, she's considerate, she's kind, she's supportive in any way she can possibly be, because she is to me. So, even though I'm, I'm at my, not at my best, and I can't really stay in a long time, I think there's a better solution for this. She's dedicated to her job and to have been on this job for all the years, and we talk just about every day. And she shared all of this with me. And I did tell her, you know, "Go talk to Bishop in First Lady," and I prayed about it also. So, now, it's really, it's for you all to make the decision, but God is in control. That's all I have to say.
Sheila Williams?
Good evening.
Donna Curry is one of my best friends. She's a friend of church. She drove my son on the bus. I'm a former school teacher. I taught 10 years for Ohio State University. I put my son in Candy hands. I didn't know her as a church member. I got to know her many years later. I've known her over 17 years, and she's great at what she does. She had a very difficult bus route, the route where I live over in the C-section of Forest Park. My husband and I still reside over in that area. Some of the children that Candy drove every day, I wouldn't want to have taught them in my class. But I can say to you, a lot of kids that were dropped off at the, I mean, at the stop in front of my house, most of those kids have degrees. A lot of them have gone on to be nurses, doctors, and all kinds of things, and I say that Donna helped support to that. I watched her every day. I didn't know who she was, but it was something phenomenal about her, because my youngest son, which is now 26, would always tell me about this bus driver. "Ms. Candy, Mom, Ms. Candy, Mom." So, one day, I stayed home from school to find out who she was. And now that I know her, once you know Candy, you see that she's all about her business. She loves her job here at Witten Woods. I would love to see her drive my grandson. He's only 19 months old. She may be older and retired by then, but who knows? But I, I pray that you guys, and I do believe that you guys would do the best thing for her. We love her at our church. She drives for our church. She's phenomenal. She's my friend. Please keep her. Thank you.
India Gable, or Gamble?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Curry, my auntie. She is a phenomenal woman, you know, and even though you're having a bad day, just when she open the door of the bus, you get all, she smiles, it's like everything is going to be okay, you know? And I always get off my mom's bus, when I used to go to Witten Woods, just so I could ride with my auntie, because she feeds me. I'm fat. I like to eat. So, she's great, just like my mom said, even though, you know, you got the Bluetooth, I got to remind my mom to take her Bluetooth off when she's talking to me, but nobody don't be on it. I mean, everyone knows Bluetooth is comfortable, it fits, and you don't know, you don't know if it's on or not, you know? So, it's an honest mistake. I mean, I hope you all consider my aunt to stay here, because I would like for her to drive, you know, have my baby on the bus, which is my mom's grandbaby. So, I really hope you consider that. Thank you.
Next up, Danielle Curry?
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Danielle Curry. My mother is Donna Curry. I would just like to speak on her behalf this evening. I would, seeing my mother come home every day, I know that she fully supports Witten Woods City Schools. She believes in the mission of educating children, and I believe she advances that mission with her mentoring on the bus. And I think it's very important that it's not just the teachers and the administrators who are in the school, it's everyone who is employed by the district. And I can say for sure that my mother is one of those individuals who helps students create an environment for education, mentoring them, giving them advice. She's always been a person who's very positive and warm, and she has a light that surrounds her, and I believe that the students and the parents see that when she drives the bus, and she's always very aware and concerned, and she's just really loves her job here at Witten Woods, and she fully supports Witten Woods City School District. And I think that her, the accusation in question is just a very small infraction. So, to have her job be at jeopardy is, for many people in the room, is mind-blowing, for the small infraction that was, that she's, that she has been charged with having the Bluetooth in. So, I would beg you to please reconsider, because she is an asset, one of those employees that cannot be replaced, as, as her support in ensuring that the students arrive safely, sound, and in good spirits to school. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson? Ms. Robinson going in twice? She on her way in? Okay. Okay, we'll come back. Dana Byrd?
Good evening, members of the board and everyone else. My name is Dana Byrd. I am here. We're listening to the testimonies of this, this woman, the character of this woman, and to just feel, you can feel her, even if you didn't know her, you would know that she's a great asset to the Witten Woods community. To have a bus driver to care for the children in such a way that their spirits are high when they're going to school and when they come home, being a single parent as well as being, having two parents in the household, to have our kids in the hands of someone like that, it's invaluable. I mean, you can't replace anything like that, and to, to have an individual to, to have such a standards of hers, I think that, I think we need to keep her. I know we need to keep her. And one thing stuck with me when I was talking to her that was so profound, you know, everybody talks about how she loves her job. Really, she loves her children. She says, "Dana, I love my children," and that was so profound to me, and to have someone that cares. I mean, we, we see it on the news, we saw, we've seen it on the news, where the bus drivers have just been, they've been caught on tape. I mean, really, seriously. Just doing some, some, some radical things here, okay? And to have this type of characteristic in a bus driver, I, we cannot go, we cannot ignore this. We just cannot. So, I just, we, we have to keep Candy. Donna Curry, thank you.
Ms. Johnson? Marshy? Marché? You're right. I just saw that apostrophe, the little accent mark. I apologize.
Good evening. I would like to say, first, we as the task force need to get together, put something in place, there's a task force, and we need to put something in place where if there's an infraction, you know, we can go from a verbal, a verbal written suspension and then fire. I mean, to just up and fire, I think is a little drastic, especially when someone doesn't have anything really, really serious in their record or their file. So, that's what I think we should do. Get together and get something like that in place, where you get, you know, there's steps that you should take. That's my personal opinion. And as far as Donna, an awesome person. She doesn't meet any strangers. She's the type of person, you be in line, my mother and I, she would, we'd be at the grocery store, and she'd be talking to someone, we'd be like, "Girl, who is that?" She'd say, "Girl, I don't know who that lady is. I was just talking to her." So, that's the type of person that she is. She's loving and caring. So, if you all can just take that into consideration, it'd be a great thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson? Is she available? We wrap back around to her? Bishop Bobby Hilton?
Good evening to the board, Superintendent Smith, and all of you here tonight. Bishop Bobby Hilton, Senior Pastor of Worded Deliverance Ministries for the World. We've been in Forest Park for right at 19 years. And we're very proud and honored to partner with the Wynton Woods School District with many activities. I'm here tonight on behalf of, they've been calling her Candy, on behalf of Donna Curry. And it was brought to my attention by her that she, she was being considered for termination. And being one that has to hire and fire individuals, we asked really tough questions. What's in your record? What's been going on? What kind of background do you have? And we, we investigated that. And she told us, you know, any kind of previous infractions. And what she remembered was back when President Obama was elected, she was apparently charged with being too happy about that. And it was written up about apparently comments made on the bus or whatever. And then she told me about having this Bluetooth in her ear, but she was not on the phone. She simply forgot to take it out of her ear. And that there is video which shows she was not talking on the phone while operating the bus. And I would hope that in this climate that we live in, when it's difficult for people to find good employment, that termination would be reserved for the most egregious activities, especially when one has 16 years on the job. And I'm not here because I don't have anything else to do, but I'm here because I believe that Donna Curry is a dependable person. I know that because she drives also for the, for the church. She volunteers for the church. And she does an excellent job. People love her. And I'm here to speak on her behalf. And I don't, I don't, I don't take lightly stepping out to speak on individuals' behalf because I do want people to know if I'm showing up, I'm showing up because I've, I've investigated, I've looked into. And I know it's a difficult situation to be in, but I'm here because she, she most definitely is an honorable person who has served the ministry with honor. And I believe she's served the district with honor. And I would just hope that termination would be something put to the side so that she can continue to be the honorable person that she has been. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Hicks?
I'm here to speak on behalf of Donna Curry. I'm an ex-employee of Wynton Woods. And that's, you know, that's not really why I'm here, but I just wanted to let you all know that I did work for Wynton Woods for several years. I was happily employed here, but the reason I'm, that's no longer here is, you know, that's something else. I met Donna working at Wynton Woods. We have been friends. We do things within the job and outside of the job, and we still do, even though I'm no longer there. I like to say on her behalf that she is an excellent employee, such as myself. I don't know of anything she's ever had in her files or her records. She may have done small things, like she said, too happy at one time, you know, it's, and then she got called up to the office, but you know, that was, that situation was handled. I'm, I'm, like her sister Marché said, I think that it should be steps. When you have been a valuable employee, you have been there for X amount of years, you really don't have any infractions, something that would terminate employment, unemployment, it should be steps. I know there's rules and regulations that we all have to follow. But it's, sometimes when you sign things, because I was told that she signed a paper agreeing, you know, letting everybody know, but some, you're not prepared for when it happens so fast. Sometimes people have to get adjusted to new situations and new rules and regulations. And when it's just something, this is your first time, let it be a step before you get to this point, especially when you have somebody that's been a great and excellent employee. I'm a witness to that because I know her, I know her work ability, I know how Wynton Woods runs. And, you know, I'm just speaking off the top of my head and from my heart. Please reconsider some of the way that they do things because you have to remember what goes for her is going to go, have to go for everyone else. Even though they may be more of a friend or more of a perfect employee, the same thing is going to have to follow for everyone else. Thank you.
One last call for Ms. Robinson?
Hi, I'm Candy's cousin. And I would just like to, I'm sorry, Donna's cousin. And I would like to speak on her behalf to let you all know that she is a good person and she has a good heart. And I know this to be a fact because as a child, she took me in. I was a very, very challenged child where no one else would take me in. Donna welcomed me into her home, and she dealt with me and my behaviors, and they were extreme, trust me. So I know that she has a good heart. When every other family member turned me away, she opened up her doors for me. And I had a baby while I was with her. And she allowed my baby, me and my baby, to still stay in her home even when I became an adult. So I love her for that, and I always will. And she is a very dedicated, loyal person. She comes from a good place. So I will ask that you all please give her another chance to keep her her job.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out to speak this evening. Your comments are appreciated. We now move on to the next item on our agenda, approval of minutes as attached. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I move that we approve the organizational meeting, meeting minutes of January the 6th and the special meeting minutes of January the 12th.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is our treasurer's report. Mr. Seymour?
Through the month of December, the general fund revenues were 22.8 million, and our month-to-date revenues were 1.6 million, which is still our state foundation. We will start now in January getting tax advances for real estate taxes. Our expenditures through the month of December for six months were 20.7 million. And our general, our total fund balance was 13.2 million, of which 12.2 was the general fund. And I presented at the workshop the graphic thing that I will do for you on a quarterly or semi-annual basis in the future. We would elect to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, let the financial report for the month of December be submitted to audit. Next item, treasurer's recommendations. Mr. Seymour?
Before you also have the investment report, of which 19.4 million invested, and interest earned was 3,155. It's up $1,000, so.
It's good news.
Very good news. Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Madam President, I move to approve the treasurer's recommendations for the month of December.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, please call the vote.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda are reports from the superintendent. Mr. Smith?
Excuse me. Madam President, there are six reports from the six schools, but I'd like to pay special attention to some that the board may find more interesting. One of the concerns that I have with the National Honor Society, I see students being inducted into the National Honor Society in third grade, fourth grade in the ES. And my concern is, how do we track that to make sure that that momentum stays forward until they reach high school? It should be just as many students involved in the process. So I'm going to take that as my own challenge to do my own data tracking with my team to find out if they had that enthusiasm and interest to be quality students and being inducted at an early age, we should make sure that that momentum stays forward. So that's one of the pieces. That's their first introduction to high achievement. And I think we need to be more responsible about making that last a lifetime as opposed to, I'm in it for a short time and then I'm not that talented kid anymore. So the national induction ceremony is at 6:30 PM on February 12th at the ES. And then the, the next upcoming event comes out of IS. If you notice, Madam President and the rest of the board, there's a soccer club, there's Echo Warriors, there's another soccer club meeting. I'm hoping that eventually we get to have a lacrosse club. That would be a very essential part of our work. And people wonder, why is the superintendent talking about lacrosse every chance he gets? Well, the research says that more lacrosse scholarships are given than any other athletic scholarship. I think our kids could earn those scholarships as well. So. And then finally, there is a parent-teacher conference that comes up in all of our schools. And I think that we need to make sure that our parents are well-informed about their students' progress, not just academically, but also their social skills as they begin to adapt to all the necessary expectations that we place upon them, like testing. There's an inordinate amount of testing that comes along with being in school now, far more testing than we've ever endured. And I think that that puts kids in some compromising positions. And we need to let parents know how to prepare for that, that rigor. So those are the pieces to the puzzle as it relates to the reports from the schools.
If I may, I would agree with you. That's a wonderful opportunity to track the academic progression of our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. I also noticed that there's six reports, but we indeed have seven buildings that provide educational opportunities to our students. So could I ask, in the future, maybe including the community building in Green Hills?
Absolutely.
In these reports?
There are young people that are in that community building for a variety of reasons, and I agree with you 100%. We've only been asking for six reports, but there are seven schools. We're educating students in seven schools. And I had the pleasure of meeting those young people for a brunch to hear some of their aspirations and ideas about their future, and you would be very, very impressed. Even though the community building is a gateway, it's a segue from their high school experience, they are still very, very in tune with what they want to become. And I think it's our responsibility. So in the future, going forward, you will see seven reports.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I could make a comment, Madam President. I appreciate the comments you've just made, Mr. Superintendent. In my experience, every now and then, the board is challenged as to why we even ask for those reports. Tonight was a good illustration. I mean, I'm interested because I and my colleagues want to go to some of the upcoming events. And even though some of them are in the school calendar, not all, because of scheduling that goes on during the year. So for, for my interest, let's keep them coming, up to seven. And it's a good illustration of the meat that's in them. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Okay, let's move on to 8.02 with our capital improvements report.
The capital improvement report will be presented by my business affairs manager, Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, board.
Good evening.
Everyone attending this evening. Each January, the business manager, director of business affairs for the district does present the previous calendar years, capital improvements to the board, coincides with the planning cycle for the board. These are our large-dollar items. You can see from the list that was provided to you that we do track even some of the smaller dollar items if they have to do with district infrastructure. So what I thought I'd do is just highlight a few key items and then touch on some of the trends because inevitably, the question comes up, we've spent this much this year, but how does that compare to prior years and so forth? So first of all, what I'd like to mention is we did spend one point, almost 1.4 million in capital improvements this year. It is, since this data was tracked in this way, it's an all-time high since 1999, excuse me, 1998. And that's, of course, despite our best efforts to control spending. There are certain issues. It's not due to lack of maintenance. It's not due to neglect. It's simply a function of the age of the buildings. While the structures are sound, there are systems in the buildings and components and infrastructure pieces that are nearing the end of their operational lifetimes. And so it's incumbent upon us, in order to provide the best educational environment for our students, to be sure that we address those issues, and that has resulted in mounting costs. So just to highlight some of the large categories, over 50% of the, of the spending this past year falls into four categories, excuse me, three categories. 26% was spent on roofing, and those projects were in various buildings. 15% was actually spent on capital improvements for the visitor-side stadium grandstands, which constituted a, an ongoing safety and liability insurance concern. And 18% comprised the purchase of new school buses for transporting our students to and from school safely. In addition to that, 5.5% actually came from funding sources outside the district's general fund or permanent improvement fund. Those included grants from the state of Ohio for Marx Emergency Radio Systems, some things that could be funded through federal grant programs, Race to the Top, for one example, and even a few donations to the district for some items. So those are some of the high points in the capital spending. The trend over the last five years, since 2009, has been up. And we, we continue to, again, try to take strategic measures to not see costs increase, but some of these increases are inevitable, and again, just due to the age of the facilities. So there was a 60% increase in this year as compared to last year. And again, some of that was one-time stadium project cost, but others are just projects that we have to address as a district. So at this time, I'd be happy to address any questions the board might have.
Mr. Denny, do you think this trend will continue, or do you think it may level off?
I, based on the data, I would expect it to continue. We think we could expect 30 to 40% increases over the next five years.
Yeah. I, I tend to agree. I think, I think it will continue. You know, I, I live in Springfield Township, and the homes in my area are all about, they're all about the same age. They're all reaching that 50, 55, 56, 57 years old. And in the last couple of months, I just happened to notice this. I started driving through my community, and I started looking at my neighbors' front yards. And I could see a trend, a trend. And when I say I was looking at their front yard, sometimes you'll drive down the street, and you'll see that somebody's got a bunch of dirt piled up in their front yard. Well, there's a reason for that. That's because their sewer drain has outlived its useful life. And there were six homes in like a two-block area of mine that just this past summer had replaced their sewer lines. Well, for me, that's a signal of, if theirs are going bad and my home's the same age as theirs, I'm kind of living on borrowed time. And then those, those keep ramping up. What was it, a week or two ago, we had another failure at, at the middle school? Was it a water line or something happened? I know it was really cold.
It was a roof, roof, roof failure.
It was a roof failure. So between the cold, the rain, the snow.
And it's right along the patch line where we repaired last year. So it's one of those things where we're, we're doing some Band-Aid pieces because we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can be, given what we have.
In the past, they've been more of onesies and twosies, but now they're alzies?
Yes, sir.
All of them are going to need something?
We're getting there.
I don't have a question for you, Mr. Denny, but I just wanted to thank you for presenting this to us tonight. I think it needs to be clear to the public, and I hope your report helps the public understand that our buildings aren't deteriorating because of a lack of maintenance. They're deteriorating because they've reached their lifespan. All of our buildings are 50 years old, if not older. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other board comments or questions to Mr. Denny?
Just a brief question about buses. How, how long do we typically find that we can use a bus before the cost to maintain is too great to keep the thing?
Usually 10 years. The, the target lifespan for a bus in Ohio, according to the ODE and the ODOT, is 9.7 years. So if you keep a bus past that, it's, you're, you're eventually going to reach a point where the repairs start to make the possession of the bus be economically somewhat challenging.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
No other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Superintendent's recommendations, Mr. Smith?
Madam President, it's a recommendation to approve personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignations and retirements. Schedule B, certificated employment. Schedule C, support- Schedule C, support staff. Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment. Schedule E, leaves. And finally, Schedule M, termination of a classified employee.
Madam President, if I may, I move that we accept Schedule A, B, C, D, and E, excluding M, termination of classified employee.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penne cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam President, I move the adoption of Schedule M as recommended by the superintendent.
Do I hear a second? Okay. It's been motioned, but not seconded. So, we will lay this for another time. All right, let's move on to 9.02. Mr. Superintendent, the high school programs of studies.
Recommendations to approve the Winton Woods High School Programs of Study for the year 2015-16 as presented.
Board, a motion would be in order?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Winton Woods High School Program of Studies for 2015-16 as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penne cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, we now move to 9.03, revised board policies.
Madam President, I believe these are the second reads of these policies, and the policies read, revised policy 1422, administration nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity; revised policy 1623, administration section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment; revised policy 3122, professional staff nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity; revised policy 3123, professional staff section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment; revised policy 4122, classified staff nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity; revised policy 4123, classified staff section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment; and revised policy 8210, operation school calendar as presented.
Board, a motion would be in order?
So moved.
I'll second the motion on all those policies.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penne cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will hear from Mr. Penne cuff regarding the legislative report. Mr. Penne cuff?
Thank you very much, Madam President. In light of other activities that we need to spend time on tonight, later on, I will defer my report to the February meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will hear from Mr. Cleary regarding the Great Oaks Report. Mr. Cleary?
I have a very slimmed-down report this evening for the board. Great Oaks Career Technical Center had their organizational meeting, just like we did, and committee assignments were given out. Lots of things have been happening legislatively, and Mr. Penne cuff is aware of many of those in lieu of reading through all that. I'll just conclude my report at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Our next item on the agenda is board motions. Mr. Penne cuff, you have the floor to submit the board's 2014 self-evaluations.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Board, you have in your preparation the summary of the work that we spent some time on a week or so ago on our self-evaluation. So, I move the approval of the checklist as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
As part of the discussion, I'd like to make a statement, if I may. Or, let me precede that with, it's been moved and seconded. I would now like to make a statement. I would like to state that the topics expressed in this self-evaluation tool provoked very thoughtful conversations regarding the state of academics in our district. Where we are now is unacceptable, and our administration, led by Superintendent Smith, are actively partnering with organizations, including the University of Cincinnati, among others, to further improve achievement in our district, especially as it relates to STEM careers and preparing our students for 21st-century jobs. Student achievement is the number-one goal of this board. So, this is the final document reflected on our agenda this evening regarding the board's self-evaluation. Let the record reflect the final version as shown on our agenda. Any other discussion from the board members? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penne cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will have comments from the members of our board. Dr. Johnson, any comments?
Yes, Madam President. Of course, my comments are around student achievement, and I think it's been a misnomer for many people in the community to say that this board is not interested in student achievement. And I had some time to reflect, and I started to think about all the things that, actually, Mr. Smith has done and put processes in place to help build student achievement. We've worked on raising the ACT scores by having someone focus on math ACT and English ACT, and that's, they have a class that actually does that, and the students are able to test a couple of times. He's put in place something with the athletic director for the athletes to have higher GPAs, and we had a report from the various coaches that this is, you know, that the GPAs are going up. It's impossible to think that a GPA is going to jump from a 1.5 to a 3.5, but in increments of five, you know, we're seeing it. We're seeing it happen. Student achievement is always going to be in the front of my mind, and I'm sure in the front of superintendent's mind and all of our minds, or we wouldn't be doing this particular job. But I know that the board has taken some harsh criticism by some of the community regarding our attention and concentration to academic achievement of the students within the district. But I believe that our superintendent, as well as our treasurer, has put, you know, money aside in place to help boost student achievement. We're working with the Teachers Association to make sure that they're, you know, on board with the different processes that Mr. Smith is putting in place. And he has an expectation of all of the district staff to champion the cause of ensuring that all students achieve to their highest potential. And to stabilize this initiative, the superintendent has even identified goals and strategies that will review the student performances and with discipline and with data, you know, that we are still data-driven to see what's going on. There's been benchmarks put in place for academic achievement for 2014 and 15, 15 and 16, and 16 and 17, to watch the incremental growth. It's not going to turn around on a dime. If you've been going in the wrong direction for so many years, it takes a little time to turn that barge around. But once you put the systems in place, you have to give it time to work and to see if it's going to heal the problem. There's a saying that my mother used to say, and I tried to remember it exactly, and I'm not sure that I have it exactly, but she used to say that a bone in the place where it's broken, she was a nurse, you know, registered nurse, but a bone in the place that it is broken, after that bone is healed, it becomes the strongest part of the bone. So, if we say that our academic achievement has been broken, and we've put some things in place to fix it, let's encourage the fix instead of tearing it down. Let's be the solution to the problem. If you have some suggestions, come forward with the suggestions and be ready to implement and work your suggestion. You know, it's like you're going to throw a party, but you're going to walk away from it. Let's don't walk away from the party. If the party's that much fun, let's all stay and watch it grow, watch it work. So, just keep in mind that, I just kind of paralleled that, if you think it's been broken, and we're trying to fix it, and we've put processes in place, then let's stick around. Let's see whether that, you know, what we've put in place is going to work, and I think we're moving in the right direction. So, I believe in what we're trying to do here. I really do. I believe in what Mr. Smith is trying to put in place. I've watched this man work. He believes in the kids. I believe in, you know, what he's able to rally the teams. We have great relationship right now with the Teachers Association. They're excited, we're excited, we want to move forward, and that's what everybody wants, the same thing. Maybe we have different ideas of how to get there, but let's just get there, right? So, if we all have the same thing in mind to get there. So, I didn't mean to ramble on, but student achievement is close to my heart. I've been an educator for 30 years, and I want to see it work. I know that it can work, but we can't make it work by tearing it apart. You can't, you know, put something in place and tear it apart before you get a chance to see it work. Let's see if it works, and then we can reassess. So, you know, go Warriors, let's come out, work together, Springfield Township, Green Hills, Forest Park, let's make it happen.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Penne cuff?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to, if I can, Dr. Johnson, use your comments as a springboard for what I would like to say. This has to do with the self-evaluation instrument. Public schools are under a bit of attack nationwide. Every news article that you see on TV starts off with words, "Education is in crisis." Comma, here's the current example. This is not to cry on our part, but to say it deserves the very best teamwork, it deserves the very best professional development, it deserves our very best energy to work at the set of opportunities that are called the Winton Woods City School District. And so, this particular activity that we did for ourselves on ourselves, not many boards do. We're an elected body, people, all five of us, we were elected independently, and now we're trying to wear the same sweater, right? We're trying to wear matching sweaters and be an effective team, along with our two valued colleagues here at the table tonight. So, this exercise of self-evaluation, we spent a couple of hours around the table talking about, so how are we doing? And it's not, how is the district yet doing? Because it's not yet doing what we wish it to be doing. But in our part, in terms of setting policy, our part in terms of defining vision, expectations, goals, measurable things, how are we doing with the set of accountabilities that we've sworn to uphold? So, as I think about it, I really wish, just think of how strange it would be to see in the paper that the Congress did self-evaluation, that the Senate did self, not about the laws, but how they're working together, or not working together.
Good point.
Wouldn't it be amazing to see a news article that the legislature in Columbus, the senators or the representatives, spend an afternoon talking about their process of work? So, that's all this is, but it's a big deal. And we were prompted to do it by some of our colleagues around the region who put together a little checklist, 26 items, just to say, are you doing this, are you doing this, are you doing this, as a reminder as to what professional board should be working on, as opposed to micromanaging and, you know, who's, what brand of lawnmower are we using, and, you know, detailed stuff. But are we dealing with the major things of student achievement, relationship with our staff, and so forth? So, after the meeting, you're welcome to a copy of what we've just voted to approve. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Penne cuff. Mr. Cleary?
I just have one very quick comment. I think the board saw, may I copied everyone on the email to congratulate Mr. Seymour and his staff on the Ohio audit. That was a really big deal. And for there basically to be no comments, or very few comments, I think one comment, relatively insignificant, that was the first one, I believe, we had had in nine years. And I just wanted to say congratulations to you, Mr. Seymour, as well as your staff, keeping all the ducks in a row and basically having a perfect audit. That is a really big deal from the state of Ohio.
Well, not perfect.
Almost perfect.
Takes a team.
Yes. But congratulations to you and your team, and be sure you express to them our appreciation for their hard diligent work in doing the right things.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and make a few comments, since Mrs. Burns is not here. I would like to just reiterate, I know he's gone now, but I would like to thank Senior Carlos de Jesus for reading his letter this evening. The letter was referencing a truly community-grown event, where businesses from Forest Park come together, along with our school district and along with our great city of Forest Park, to benefit our students and their families. So, I thank you to all whom participated last year. Also, thank you to everyone for this wonderful cupcake, which I really didn't need, and all of the other board recognition. We greatly appreciate that. I read this quote today, and I'd like to share it with everyone. So, "If you want to live in a good community, you need to step up and find a way to serve that community. Although we certainly don't expect recognition," I think I can speak for all the board members in saying it definitely feels magnificent to be appreciated, and we greatly appreciate it. So, thank you. Okay, Mr. Superintendent or Mr. Seymour, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Seeing that Mr. Lanier, our wonderful president of the Winton Woods Teacher Association, is here this evening, Mr. Lanier, you have the floor if you would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
While he's coming up, do we get to vote on the use of the word wonderful?
We can switch it out for awesome or something. Yeah, I agree. Well, first of all, just, Dr. Johnson, that was really inspiring hearing what you had to say, and I am totally behind you and agree with what you said about the plan for improvement. And I really like the fact that from Randy, Mr. Seymour, all the way over here, Mr. Smith, and everyone in between, I just, just the openness for ideas to be put forth in the environment that has been allowed this year. When I bring something forward, or another teacher brings an idea forward, it is listened to, and that level of respect is much appreciated. And there's so much more than what Dr. Johnson has talked about as far as what we've done to take a step, and several steps, in improving the education of our students here. I think when we look right behind Madam President there, ensuring all students achieve their highest potential, and remembering that that's what we're all here for, from parents, from stakeholders, to community members, teachers, all of us in this room. And just knowing that we're all going from that direction means a lot to all of us here, and especially to myself and the Teachers Union. I talked to Mr. Penne cuff about this before, see if he was going to bring it up, and I'm going to guess you're going to be talking a little bit about this later, but I could be wrong. So, I want to take the opportunity to expand upon recent current events in the state of Ohio with the Ohio Department of Education. Dr. Richard A. Ross, since the last time we talked, Madam President, has put forth a series of recommendations that he is hoping that the state legislature will pass to, as Mr. Smith mentioned, ease the burden that is on our students, an overwhelming burden. And, you know, we are, we all believe in the idea of using data to help students. Mr. Denny, to myself, all of us, it's such a big part of teaching. But I go back, go back to my uncle story from when I was younger. My uncle's only 10-years-older, so we always told this in the family, and that is, you really like Flintstones vitamins? And who's going to argue that vitamins are good, I mean, who's going to say that vitamins aren't good for you, right? They are, they're awesome. Until you swallow a whole bottle full of them and have to get your stomach pumped to save your life. Right now, the state of Ohio, as many of us are feeling, as many parents here will realize in the coming months, is trying to get us to swallow an entire bottle of vitamins, of data-driven education. Once again, it's great stuff when taken in moderation, but we are, we are really facing some unique challenges. some unique challenges technologically, and I know the people in this room are working very hard to overcome those, but the reality is, what it is taxing on us and our children especially, you're going to hear some things, you're going to see some things you will not believe. Just looking last night again, and of course, I'm going to bring up one of the worst examples, but these are our students. These are our kids. Looking at the middle school students, in the second semester, which takes, which consists of a little over 90 days, they have approximately 50/50, that's 5-0, 5-0 state testing days scheduled, including SLOs. That's more than half the days that we have, second semester, have some sort of test scheduled from the state. And the students, they want to have the, they want to have the right to learn. We want to teach them, and we are hoping now with Dr. Richard A. Ross's recommendation, and we're hoping now that everyone in this room will help support Dr. Ross and his, and his challenge to try and get the legislature to change some of this, which was passed in good faith, but the reality of it is how it's affecting our children. And just one thing as a legislative high point that I want to point out, he says he would like, his recommendation is reduce the amount of testing to 2% for the year and 1% for practice tests. Currently, 2% at the state minimum for the high school level. 1,001 hours would be about 20 hours of testing. With SLOs alone, a student, and that's not even including the park and the air and just start making up a bunch of acronyms, with just SLO testing alone, a student will have, with a seven-bell schedule and just one semester class each way, they will have 13 hours of testing. So I just, I just want to point out that, what he very intelligently did there without saying, let's not do park, let's not do, because I'm not sure what he's going to do with that at the high school level, what the plan is, that's going to be for the legislature side, but that doesn't leave a whole lot more. So it's going to be interesting what we come up with, what we decide to support, and I just hope in the coming month that we get behind Dr. Ross and show our support for him. The teachers recently, in support of this idea, passed a resolution unanimously in six of the seven buildings, in support of this idea of helping our children and giving them the right to learn. One of my colleagues, this might be a record for me speaking here, but I'm going to summarize it in all. One of my colleagues and one of our leaders in the teachers' union, Mr. Christopher Giffrey, a Spanish teacher at the high school, recently put forth an article to the Woodrow Wilson National Fellowship Foundation, and it's going to be published here at the next quarterly publication. It's called "The Fellowship." The Woodrow Wilson Fellowship Program helps recruit and train some of the top young math and science teachers in the United States, and we are very blessed to have two of them here in our school with Brad Samina-Wazaluski and Kara Shaw. And just a real big honor for Chris, and I was going to go and read a few quotes from the beginning and read the final paragraph for you, and give you a copy of the rest if you'd like, in all. First one here by Robert M. Hutchins. "The object of education is to prepare the young to educate themselves throughout their lives." Albert Einstein. "Education is what survives when what has been learned has been forgotten." What is a better measure of student success? A student passing a state test? Or a student that is transformed into a lifelong learner, that has a passion for learning and the ability to apply that knowledge? I'm happy to be a part of a school district. One of the things that Dr. Johnson didn't get to was the project-based learning and the ISSM model. And I'm happy to be a part of a program that goes against the teach-to-the-test trend that is rampant throughout the nation because of all the burdens of testing. So going on here, last paragraph here. "We need to take a stand against toxic testing and what it is doing to the minds of our children. We see the effects in our classrooms daily. Students can no longer apply knowledge learned to novel situations. Students do not learn how to learn. Students do not retain learned information as we have trained them to memorize, regurgitate, and then make room for the next standard. How can our future governors, senators, CEOs, employees handle diverse situations that we haven't specifically trained them to handle? Unfortunately, we have shifted our focus to programming our kids like robots to regurgitate useless information on a state-mandated test, while at the same time, private companies are spending billions to program robots to think for themselves." Ironically, Bill Gates, who's behind ultimately a lot of this testing, is one of the ones doing that. This, as I said, this is something I'm glad that we are trying to fight here at Witten Woods by teaching students to own the information. And it's been very refreshing, as I'm a teacher in both the regular school and the, and AGS, seeing students' minds open up as we introduce new styles and create ownership. Thank you for your time, and I can't wait to see what happens over the next month.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Any comments?
No, I just, you did a great job of laying out the issue. Dr. Ross, of course, is a former superintendent. He came up as a teacher, principal, superintendent at Reynoldsburg, I believe, and is now the state superintendent. He is the superintendent with the board that is highly politicized. The, my acquaintances that are in the State House every day, trying to get the pulse of various, various members, report that they can't quite figure out which way the wind is blowing as various legislators joust with each other on who can be more conservative, who can put educators on the shortest leash. So it's a very uncertain time professionally for people such as him and for our system of schools in the state of Ohio. So we will watch it very closely. Thanks for your intro.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka.
Thank you again, Mr. Lanier. Do we have a representative from OPEC who would like to speak this evening? No? Okay. Board, there is a need for an executive session this evening for certain personnel matters. A motion would be in order?
Madam President, I move that we go into executive session to discuss a matter involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms or conditions of employment, evaluation of performance or promotion.
Is there a second? It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam President, it's very likely that we will come back out of executive session and still vote on M. I don't know how late or how long that will be. You're more than welcome to stay, just as an FYI. We will come back out and vote in public.
Okay. Thank you all for your attendance this evening. We now move into our executive session.